We'll call this meeting the board. Good afternoon, friends and board colleagues and everyone on the call. Thank you for being with us today. It is Tuesday, January 19, 3:04 PM, and we are getting started with our special board meeting. So before we get started, I will read our board norms and protocols as we do at every meeting. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and in the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, and to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that, I do just want to say thank you to Jamia, who is stepping in today as clerk. So glad to have you here, Jamia. If you need us to slow down or repeat anything, or need a little assistance, please feel free to ask, and we're here to help out. But thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
So with that, Ms. Warren, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Dr. Yeager.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would take a motion to approve today's special agenda.
So moved.
And move in second.
Uh, I got Dr. Yeager did the first, who seconded?
Ms. Clark.
Thank you.
Would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So first on the agenda, we have our KSB delegation that we must select today, just in the nick of time, so we can submit that. So I would take any nominations for our delegate from USD 500.
I nominate Maxine Drew.
Second.
The nomination in the second. Ms. Drew, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you. I would do a roll call vote to have Ms. Maxine Drew, to approve Ms. Maxine Drew as the KSB delegate for USD 500.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Drew, for taking that responsibility. We appreciate you. It would be nice to appoint, to have a couple of alternates, or at least one alternate, in the case that Ms. Drew is unable to attend a meeting for the district. So do I have a nomination for an alternate, or a volunteer to be an alternate?
I would nominate Janie for that, if she was interested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Humphries, are you interested and willing to accept?
Sure.
Ms. Warren.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have interest in nominating or volunteering a second alternate, in case Ms. Humphries or Ms. Drew cannot attend?
Would hope the two of them could work it out.
Okay. Well, hopefully, Greg, do you think we need a second one, just in case, or are we good with just the two?
It's not required. I think KSB lets you have as many alternates as you want.
Okay, perfect. Well, I think-
Mr. Lopez, I'm sure they already know the delegate assembly is six to seven on Thursday evening. They'll receive their Zoom, and I'll be at the board meeting on Saturday.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
Just reporting.
And Dr. Nguyen, I think there were a couple items already up for vote on the delegate assembly, aren't there? Do you know?
Yeah, the legislative priorities and a few other things, so.
Is there anything that this board should know about, in terms of telling the delegates to the assembly about those two proposals that you're aware of?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll yield to Ms. Drew, since she is on, or one of either Drew or Humphries on the legislative committee. So that's the major part of the program. And then they'll elect a, soon as I get back to the page. They'll like the president-elect, but that's kind of like the person already-
Right.
-lobbied for that.
Okay.
Ms. Drew, you haven't gotten any?
Just for reference, I did meet with them on Saturday at nine o'clock in the morning, and we looked, we discussed what possible things that they are going to be bringing up, and they're going to be sending me the link later on, so that I can connect with them to be able to make sure I understand fully what's taking place and is going to be presented.
No, I'm talking about the legislative priorities. In your last meeting, you could have, you know, identified those. Yes, no?
Yes, I do have a listing of them. I'll, I'll give you a call, and we will talk about it, and I can show you what I have.
Okay. The challenge with that is that your vote depends on whether the board supports those legislative positions. But I must, I would say we would, but I don't. But Greg, how do you want to handle that one?
Um, I could circulate to, I think those legislative positions are posted with KSB at this point. I could circulate them to everybody on the board. Maybe that's the best way to go at it. Or Marcia, I know you're on the call as well. Is that accurate?
Um, they are posted. So I guess the only issue would be if, as a board, there isn't agreement.
What, why don't I do this? Why don't I email them to the board members while you have the board meeting going? I know you've got your training you're going to do. If you don't mind, at some point during the meeting, take a look at them, and if anybody sees anything they want to convey to Ms. Drew before she has to vote as a delegate, you do that today before your meeting's over with, I think would be smart.
What about if we plug that in right at the end to make sure, does that sound?
I think that would be perfect. I'll, I'll get them, and I'll email them to everybody, so you guys have them. But then, before you guys log off for the meeting today, just make sure that you confirm that everybody's good with those items, or if there's something you guys want Ms. Drew to carry forward on behalf of the school district at the meeting, then she can do it. Okay?
And if there's any amendments, then, Ms. Drew, we just rely upon your judgment.
Right. I think that's the best way to handle it.
Great. Thanks, Greg. And thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for bringing that forward, and Marcia. Jamia, just please make, please make just that, either you or Ms. Smith will need to complete the delegate form, the online delegate form, to get that submitted today.
Today.
KSB. Thank you. All right. So moving along, we want to welcome Dr. Weisman, who's with us again today. So thank you for joining us virtually, and I will hand it over to you.
Okay, well, I'm going to share my screen here. So although it looks like I'm starting out just the same with the PowerPoint today, it's going to be a little different, not quite so PowerPoint intense. And then also, what's going to be kind of very different today is I've taken some huge liberties based on the time we've already spent together to make some recommendations. So I am going to talk to you about norms and make some recommendations for where you start, and I'll kind of go through that in a minute. So to do things the way that I always say we should, first, just to highlight what we want to get done today, and at the end, we'll talk about legislative positions. But hopefully nail down the norms, talk about your productive conflict reports, talk then about next steps where you are with having a vision to go forward. So, and I want to skip this for a second. Hmm, it looks like a slide is missing, so it'll probably show up in some weird place where it's not supposed to be. So I'll just stop right here. What I wanted to do for checking in today is just literally have us kind of go around the box and just say, how are you today? How are you feeling? And what are you looking forward to tonight, tomorrow, in the near future? So just a quick check-in. And of course, I had a delightful slide to do that, but. So I could go in the order of you on my box, and if you want to pass, you know, same rules as we've used before. Randy, how are you today?
I'm doing really well. It's been a really busy day, but it hasn't been super stressful. And I'm doing well. I saw some sunlight. I walked the dog. I got in a quick workout, and I'm feeling good today, so.
Great, thank you. Ms. Page, how are you today?
I'm, I miss what you asked us to do. I'm sorry. But, oh, I feel good. I feel good. I'm blessed. I can't ask for any more than that.
All right, great. Janie, I haven't seen you in anything I've done in a little while here, so I really do need to know how you're doing here.
It's a beautiful day. The sun is shining. And how can you ask for any more with the sunshine in January?
Very good. My daughter just told me in the Bay Area in California, that's what she misses about Kansas, believe it or not, that in Kansas, the sun does shine in the winter, and it doesn't there. So apparently, temperature's not everything. Dr. Nguyen, how are you today?
I am great. I am glad that the state of Kansas took the warnings from the FBI and closed the state legislature. So I am very happy.
So peaceful day tomorrow.
Yeah, we're not there.
Very good. So Jamia, how are you today?
I'm doing great.
Okay, kind of working in a new role here.
Yeah, the meeting went well, so I'm relaxed.
Okay, good. All right. Dr. Miguel, how are you?
Let me unmute. I'm doing really well. We went to visit our son in Springfield, Missouri this weekend to watch the game with him, and so that was good family time. And now looking forward to a peaceful inauguration tomorrow.
Great, good. We'll, we'll hope all our good wishes make that. Ms. Clark, how are you?
Hello, I'm doing well today. I'm excited about our training and where we're going, where we're headed as a board.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Goheen, how are you today?
I'm doing really well. It's a nice to have a good weekend and a nice relaxing time back in the office, so.
All right, thank you. Ms. Drew.
I'm doing very well. I feel as though that I'm back on track with everything, and I'm ready to move forward in a very positive way.
Okay, because it's 2021 now, so. So Dr. Yeager, how are you?
I'm maintaining. I still am sad. I'm still, I'm still sad and grieving.
Okay, I'm, so you, Stacy's had a recent loss, I think, maybe, okay. All right, Stacy, we're off, wash, okay, let's freshen my memory. Okay, my heart is with you. I'm still going through that myself, so. Okay, keep you and your family in my heart. Rashid, are you available to tell us how you are?
I think he's at another meeting.
Okay, all right.
He's always busy.
I know, but I don't want to leave him out, because you never know when the day is going to be that, that he wants to join in. Okay, so going forward here, like I said, I want to do this very differently. So we've had a lot of hours of discussion about this, and I've looked at all of your survey results. And so, as I said, like, taking some real liberties in making these recommendations. Factors that I considered were things that have come up, things that you talked about in your survey, which I'll share part of those, but I don't want to keep spending a lot of time on that. But another factor was, as you look at your norms and the conversations we've had, is there a place where there could be the greatest consensus, starting in the immediate future, with the idea that as you grow and practice into these, and you revisit them annually, you can enhance them. So based on things that you have said, and so it's not necessarily a factor, always of this many people voted for this or that. Part of what I tried to factor in was my sense of passion about those agreements or disagreements. And then a huge factor was where there was still discomfort with definition. Because my thinking was that it would be better to start with a set of norms that truly people can agree on what they mean, and hold fast to them, and have them be meaningful. So for example, one of the comments was, you know, these are words, these are just words, you know, that they don't have as much meaning. So, so trying to factor that in, what I try, what I'm trying to do here is represent some norms that could be for where you are at this moment in time, with the idea that you would try to stay with these and revisit them in July at an organizational meeting. So they're going to look very similar, but the conversation should sound, it should bring up conversation that we've had. So I merged some old things with some new things. So one is just, and it goes back into that idea of vision that we're going to talk about, that the work that we're doing is for the best interest of our students and community. So there's a little bit of like visioning here. Demonstrate respect for each other's abilities and value everyone's input. Then this idea, which was common from lots, in lots of different ways from you, show unity as a board. So you share differences of opinions in the discussion, but that once the vote is taken, move forward in unity. So that as, as you present yourself to the community, people see a cohesive group. Treat all individuals. So this was meant to include, you know, members, staff, community members. And then this, I specifically put this word in, that it's not like policing in policing of each other, but as individual members, that we would agree to continuously self-check, are we doing the best that, that we can in following these norms? And then, based on a lot of conversation that you had, also removing from the norms this statement and making it a practice that's just generally agreed to, but not within your norms. Now, and you can't vote during this special meeting on these norms. So use both my hats here. But I want to suggest those. I'll give you, I'll go through with a little bit of information that informed that, and then hope that you might, on your next agenda, hopefully, without a need for a lot more discussion, because we've had quite a bit, either agree or disagree to use those for the next six months, with the idea is you do more work than you would be more informed again. So any general discussion related to that before I share more information?
For the first one.
Uh huh.
I would like to suggest that we say students, staff, and community.
Okay, that's, that's a good point. Okay, and that was probably something I should have picked up on. So I wouldn't have come in with suggested norms like this if we were only in our first, what, six hours of working together. But it's the, you know, over the time, the, so other thoughts? Does anybody want to say, I'm sick and tired of working on those norms? So, okay, let's go now and move on. That's what I'd be saying. All right, I'm gonna add that word, just add the word staff into that one, and I will send that to Leslie and Jamia for you all to discuss whether that should be part of your next agenda. Okay, so very quickly, I want to go through just for, just other information, some other things that were part of that Survey Monkey. Now, something weird has happened to my PowerPoint. I'll tell you what, I just reviewed this before we went on, so I guess we'll make do. This was your preferred method of communication. I hope these are not all messed up. So one person preferred text, most of you preferred email. Hmm, I do not know what has happened here. Maybe my computer's saying, I've done too many workshops today, and it's tired of PowerPoints. Good thing this wasn't going to be a very important part. Most of you believe that you're getting adequate information prior to each meeting. There is one person that disagrees. And, and so I think that that's something, as we kind of talk about some of the DISC reports, where we'll talk about how to communicate getting those needs met, if those needs can be met. And these, I'm just going to quickly show, these are just things that kind of informed what we already talked about. You'll notice that I left those surprises out, because there were still a lot of definitions that are in debate, but that there was general agreement that the board nor the superintendent should be surprised, a little less agreement related to the superintendent and staff, and with the idea that that's a part of the job. But that was something that I thought, after living with these, could be revisited. So then, here were some things that you all said in terms of how you show respect. And so for whatever reason, when I've saved this the last time, it totally reformatted. Hopefully, we'll be able to see everything as we go on. But, but these are words from all of you. So, you know, how do you show respect? You try to be as clear as you can, you know, appreciate, express appreciation of the other person's perspective. I will clean this up so that you can read it more easily and send it to you, so that you have a copy of what the rest of you said. And then, what would enhance your effectiveness as a board? And so you can see, some of that was incorporated a little bit into the norms. Once again, this will be in the information that I send to you. A focus on finding our common ground. Once again, this kind of informed where we ended up with the norms. Oh, well, there's that slide in the wrong place. So, yeah, I think the, the technology gods are picking on me. Okay, so I'm going to come out of this for a moment. Did everybody get an email today with your reports? Okay. So I didn't want you to get those too far in advance of talking about them, because I was hoping that we could have people kind of look at them at the same time. Did anybody have time to already read theirs very carefully? Be honest. Okay.
Just skimmed it.
Okay, okay, good. So that is a good thing. So can you all access them right now on your computers, or did you print them? And I have PDFs on my computer. I can, I can send a PDF if anybody can't get it. So, Ms. Page, did you receive yours?
I, oh, I'm sorry. I did receive it. I just jotted a few notes.
Okay.
No, I didn't print it, and I'm not real good at going back and forth, but I wrote some notes down.
Do you remember kind of your dominant area? Okay, okay. Can everybody else access theirs? Okay. Let's see, Dr. Miguel, I don't, you did it, right? But I don't think you got a report.
I've done it before, but I don't think I got a link to do it this time.
Okay, all right. So I think this will still be informative, since I think you did the, more the personality one, and this is more focused on conflict. But having done the personality one, you'll kind of be able to figure out where you are. Okay, so let me go back to my slides for just a little bit, because I did include just some summary slides, just kind of. To. Okay, so just to go over this, the D is for dominance. So generally, within this model, people that predominantly fall in this quadrant are direct, they're tough-minded, strong-willed, forceful, firm, okay? The I influence, outgoing, enthusiastic, optimistic. Down here, inconscientious, more likely to be analytical, reserved, precise, perhaps more private. And then S for steadiness, even-tempered, accommodating, patient, tactical. Now, most people do not fall cleanly or purely into a quadrant. We, we tend to have dominant areas, and there are a few people who kind of evenly fall in- And um, there are a few people who kind of evenly fall into all four areas. But that is more the exception. Many of us, if we've done this kind of work before, we're working on taking advantages of the strength of our dominant area, you know, while trying to um, build some of the other areas. So if you've done this kind of work for a long time, yours might not look, you know, as as pure when you did it because of that focused effort on doing it. So when we're looking at this in terms of um, how to make conflict productive, the the principles that we're considering are that conflict is inevitable. You know, here this says is inevitable in the workplace. I would say anytime you have more than one human being together, conflict is inevitable. It's it's going to happen and it can be very productive. You know, other factors um, in your private life or in your professional life, influence what those conflicts look like. Well, if you um, are having a conflict with your immediate supervisor, uh, that may look a little different than a conflict with a peer in terms of how it manifests itself. And then the culture of the organization also influences um, what that looks like. If you're in like a military culture, conflict will play out a little differently um, than if you're in an academic culture, for example. Sometimes um, I compare school district cultures to one that's like more corporate or one that's more academic. And that's just kind of my shorthand of talking about the way people manage uh, conflict within that. But each of us controls how we respond in those conflict, but we can't control someone else. So that's just a basic principle. We all know that. Sometimes though, when you're in a conflict, we forget. And depending on our category, we may be trying to find a way to control someone else's responses, but really we only control our own. And um, so these styles are used to help understand what is likely to be your responses, you know, in a conflict and then knowing about someone else's style. Hope you understand theirs. And um, what we really want to emphasize as we learn more about ourselves and each other is how to just be more effective. So within dominance, this is uh, what I just was trying to share with you. But in conflict, someone who is uh, really focused in this quadrant, in conflict, their focus is gonna be on um, looking at things logically and winning. You know, the desire to win. Whereas someone who falls into this quadrant um, in a conflict, their focus is gonna be more on justice, but also on logic because they're both on, you know, the the left side of the axis here. And sorry, the FedEx man must be here, so my dog is telling me. And conflict, if you fall into the influence quadrant, is gonna be more on expression and feelings. And then on the steadiness. In a conflict, those are the people that really want to find consensus. But again, the focus is on feelings. So um, going back into your own reports here, then if you could go to, if if you have it, it would be on your page. Well, it's the page where it says um, part one conflict with the D style. Do you all see a page like that? And then it should compare your style, which may or may not be D, but how, if you, if it's not D, how they would be different from you. So I'm just gonna wait a little bit and see if everybody can find that page. Let me stop sharing here while we're going through this. That way if um, somebody wants me to look up theirs, I can. Okay. So um, I want to just give you a few minutes then and look at yourself in relationship to um, your style compared to each of the other quadrants. And I want you to see if there's anything that surprises you or seems new to you.
Marsha, I do have a question. How did, how did ours compare to each other? Like, do we know how many Ds, how many Is, how many CSs that we have?
So I do have that. I I was actually, Stacy, kind of wanting today to not share that and have uh, you kind of focus on yourself uh, with each other, with the other styles. What I would really like for you to do is, and if you want to share with each other, obviously, I'm not gonna stop you. But I thought there might be some value in doing this and then at your next board meeting, really kind of paying attention um, to what you see in your peers. And in kind of waiting at least one, but I mean, a couple of board meetings and then kind of revisiting those thoughts. I feel, I thought there might be um, a little more value in how you use it. If you kind of use, I guess it would be like using the inquiry method in science. So you go in with a little bit of information and then compare that to your environment a little bit and see what you think. So if, if that makes people uncomfortable, you know, I'm happy to send it. But I thought with the focus, and this was with the suggestion of norms as well, is really focusing these things on ourselves and the idea that that's who we um, really control. And if um, and if we look at different ways that we might respond. So what you know is you go out into the world that you are gonna interact with people from all styles. And so kind of with that focus on self-first. Now, I agree, and often when people do this where they're doing just the whole personality thing, like when I've done those workshops years ago, that's what you spend most of the day doing is talking about each person's and how they interact um, with each other. But I, with the emphasis on conflict, I thought this might be a little more productive in the long run. So thoughts about that? You asked the question faster than I thought we'd get to it.
No, I understand the explanation. I was just reading through and um, you know, reading through the comparative and it says like, what's the summary or reflection of it? So I understand the goal.
Okay, well, so um, but could I give everybody just a few minutes to kind of look at yourself compared to each style? And then we'll go to the next step, maybe um, give you five minutes or so to read through those. Wanda, can you pull yours up to read those? Do you need me to?
You know what? I might have to go out and read it and then come back.
Okay.
Cause I I I'm not that.
Okay, that's, that's why I was asking. Sometimes it can be a challenge. Um, what if we uh, go off-camera, call it uh, like a five-minute break? And have you read through that section and then we'll come back and talk about it in a summary way? Is that, can you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I have um, 3:44, so wanna come back in about uh, 3:49? How's that for about? We're pretty precise. See, yeah, 3:49. Okay, welcome back, everyone. So I'm, I'm hoping today, like I said, to just really have us um, do self-reflection and and focus on where we are. So on um, page 10, um, and and I'm assuming the reports you had page numbers on them? Is it, can you find them that way? Okay. So it has the reflection at the bottom. You know, what is a conflict situation that you wish you um, would have handled better? And what impact do you think your DISC style would have had in that situation? So I don't want anybody to share their style right now. So I want to just ask in generalities, can you think of an example based on what you've read where you can see how someone's style that's very different from yours would cause you to have a reaction that maybe wasn't one that you were proud of? Is there, is there a way for anybody to share without sharing your style? And we're not always ready to jump in and share what, something we're not proud of.
This was Wanda Brown. You said not proud of. But if that's how you've been raised and that is your orientation and you were raised by adults and this is how they felt, you needed this to survive, to be strong. I I I don't have any problem with it. Cause I feel like it got me to where I am today. So I I don't, you know, this is when my mother, my father, my grandmother dead. You gotta be a survivor, you know? If not, you gonna get kicked to the side.
And so um, Ms. Page, I think that would be true of all of us. So i- sometimes it's more subtle for some people than others, but pretty much we can look at how we handle our situations. And almost always, if you ask the question, I wonder how they learn to survive? Or um, you know, to 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 feel uh, good or effective in the world? You can, you can almost always trace it back to those early childhood kinds of experiences. And so no matter how much education we have, those are the emotional imprints that really get into the limbic part of our brain that influence how, how we react and respond often before we even think, you know, with the the front of our brain. So we're all wired that way and and part of that is what makes us efficient as human beings. You know, if we had to stop and process every piece of information in a conscious way, we'd never get anything done. So the way this relates to when we're in conflict though, is if we start to to increase our own awareness of ourselves, we can see who someone who learned to survive differently in a different way. So perhaps their means of survival um, was no matter what, to agree and get along. Because if you didn't do that, you know, bad things were gonna happen to you. So you could see how someone who learned to survive that way, who has a conflict with someone who may be in their family, the way that you got your needs met was, okay, so like in my family, one girl with brothers. If I didn't reach in first and grab the pizza I wanted first, I wasn't gonna have any pizza, okay? So you put a pizza in front of me, I'm not waiting around to be polite. I'm grabbing my pizza. That's how I learned to survive when pizza was being served. So you know, unfortunately, sometimes it's not the best way for me to react to a situation. But that's how I learned to do it. And we carry those forever, you know? I'll tell a story on my husband and I don't think he'll mind, but when he, he had a pretty rough childhood and and witnessed a lot of abuse. And he learned to survive. There was a closet that he just hid in, you know, and he always felt very safe in that closet. Well, he always makes his office, you know, like when we've moved, his office is always in the furthest corner of the basement. And it was just about two years ago, we started thinking that through. Whereas I can't stand it to be in a corner in the basement. I have to be a place somewhere where I can see the world, you know? Neither one of us is right or wrong, but we have opposite needs in in terms of feeling, you know, safe. And so recognizing, I, you know, so I'm thinking Randy was practically 70 years old before having that realization, you know? Lived a lot of life fairly effectively before figuring that out. But it is the kind of thing that helps you um, see why you may react to one person so differently than another person because there may be something that in their response, based on their need, that actually um, causes you to feel less safe, for example. And and I'm using safe in a very generic way. I don't mean in a dangerous way, just most comfortable perhaps. Or safe to express your opinions, et cetera. So um, so I'm, I'm wondering, without sharing your style, did you see something in reading about other styles where you could see how you might, it might cause you to respond to a situation in a way that you wouldn't have thought you would? Like, did you read about another style that hit you that way?
I speak into the group or to Ms. Page?
To the, to the group.
Yeah, I can say for, I mean, I can say for me, yes, and especially when you don't know someone. And so maybe their response kind of catches you off-guard or it's not something that you're expecting because you don't know that person. But then as you get to know them, even those responses still might take you off-guard or um, I know, and I can only speak for myself, as I, as I learn better, I try to do better. And so um, so my response in one environment may not be appropriate in another environment. How I respond to my husband at home, I mean, I won't respond to um, one of my peers or someone that I'm working with and doing things differently with. So just being able to manage my personality when it comes to that as well. I also think my person, I mean, not going into my personality style, but it flexes based upon where I am and then that situation. So I I can speak to that because I've done something very similar to this before. But I think my biggest answer to that is being able to, being able to adjust. And there's even things that maybe I learned, a behavior I learned early in life that I've come back and said, oh, that probably wasn't the right way. Or that doesn't really work for me um, as I, as I'm in different areas and places.
So sometimes, because we all carry these implicit bias and we'll see somebody and they, there's something that we see in them that makes us think they're gonna behave in a certain way. And so we may be responding based on what we think they're gonna do and that may not be how they react at all. During public comment in board meetings, you sometimes see that where um, perhaps if you. see that, where perhaps if, if there's a tough issue the district's talking about, you've, you already may be kind of preparing yourself to be defensive, or, or think you might be attacked. And then if somebody looks away that, you know, in, in whatever you saw growing up makes you think they're gonna behave a certain way, you may increase your defensiveness or decrease it, and get very relaxed, and then be just blindsided, because it's like, they're not supposed to be mad at me, that's, that's not what I expected from them. So I think just being able to know some of this, and then based on what you see in people's responses, it can, it can help you. So it goes back to that line we use all the time, seek to understand first, and using some of these clues from this. So I, I know Randy, you've done work in trauma. I try to sound like I'm not talking about trauma-informed organizations all the time, but, you know, once you do that, you can't undo that. So I do kind of apply, apply a trauma overlay to this. When I first started doing this work, gosh, 30 years ago, I believe, I didn't have that. And, and as I've learned more about the brain, I see this information a little differently than I did when I first started kind of doing some of this personality stuff. And I, and I think what, what I know now is it's much more like what Ms. Page says. You know, it's, we, we have been conditioned, literally biologically, to, to have reactions. And so it's learning about what others might do that sometimes can help us maybe look at a different way to approach them people. Okay, other thoughts for that? I know this makes it tricky, not wanting you to share yet. I just think there's gonna be such value in not knowing yet down the road, that as much as I'd like to, it's more fun when we share, but I, I do think, I think it would be really healthy to just kind of, to wait, you know, after you learn more about yourself. Okay, so that, what I wanted to go to next, and I, I won't spend our time on Zoom doing this, that's also part of this, is this is all stuff I'm used to doing in person. It's very strange to do it on Zoom. But I, I want to have you on your own time, you know, read the sections on why do I do this, you know, compared to you. I think that, and looking at those automatic thoughts, if, if you could find time to look at some of that before your next board meetings, and not even necessarily board meetings, just interactions with other people, you know, to, to start to see. But what I would like for us to kind of do together, not necessarily share together, but on the page where it has destructive responses, and you can, you can mark three behaviors that others do that bother you the most in a conflict, and then put a star next to three behaviors that you think you do most often in conflict. Could I have you take a moment, maybe two minutes, and, and do that? And then I'm not gonna have you share the three behaviors you do most often, because that would be a giveaway. But I would like to have us maybe share a little bit about three behaviors that others do.
Marshall, what page is that?
It is...
Eleven.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
The way I printed my copy, I didn't get my page numbers. Yes. And, and Ms. Page, don't worry about this now. This can be something that you could look at later.
True.
Okay, so this will involve a little sharing, and a little sharing that I hope is helpful without really giving away your style too much. It'll, might come out a little bit. But would somebody be willing to share one of the checkmarks that you put that, just one, a behavior that you see in others that really bothers you when there's a conflict? Just, just one?
One that I checked was, or is belittling. I think you can be in conflict and have differences of opinions, and have a healthy, tense dialogue without belittling people. And I think when that, that's a different, for me, right? That, when you introduce that element of, and what I interpret of, as belittling, that adds a whole other element to a conversation, discussion, conflict that, that is unnecessary. Because I almost think of it. And, and again, I think it goes to interpretation, right? And how you interpret belittling, and it's almost forceful attacking, in, in my head, right? And so it's, it's unnecessary as part of the conflict.
And you raise a, a good point, because something that may feel belittling to you, someone else might read differently. But your response is gonna be because you read it that way. That's, that's how you see it. Okay. What's something that somebody else put a checkmark on?
I chose insens- insensitivity.
Okay.
As one. Because despite whatever we do, for me, you have to be careful about what you say and how you say.
Okay. So for, for that, how it impacts other people?
It could lead to other problems down the road.
Okay, the long view. Okay. Something somebody else put?
Oh, go ahead.
No, I've done enough talking. Go ahead, whoever was going.
No, I was just gonna say lying, when I know you're not telling the truth.
Okay. And you know what's interesting? When I do a similar activity sometimes with teachers, on what are student behaviors that trigger them to react in a way that they wish they didn't. Lying is, lying and like rolling eyes are the most common things that I hear because, because it triggers something in, in the teacher that probably, you know, comes from a place they may not even remember. And, and so that is a very, very common trigger that we hear. Let's see, Janie, were you about to say?
Dismissing others' opinions.
Okay.
Which to me goes with belittling.
Okay, so shows lack of value for someone. Okay, Yolanda, what were you gonna have?
Okay, I was going to say exaggerating the problem. And I'll, yeah.
Okay, or catastrophizing. All right. Another one from anyone?
I think mine is revenge, looking for, to even the score.
Okay.
I'll say passive aggression.
Okay. So passive aggressive is one where people who maybe haven't had as much interaction with a person may totally miss, you know, with just a little bit of interaction. The more interaction you have with somebody, the more likely you would be to pick up on them. Okay, another one? Okay, so, so the value of this kind of exercise really isn't so much in the other person, but just helping us think through how we react and respond to things. And interestingly, these are the same conversations, like if, if a couple goes to therapy, marriage counseling, the, you know, these are the kinds of things. These are, are issues in all kinds of relationships, professionally and personally. And it's not like there's this professional world and this is this personal world. So although we separate our lives and may outwardly appear to be different, our true selves are the same, you know, i- in all of those experiences. So the, the more that we learn about ourselves, the more that we're able to recognize it. So if on your own time, you could look at the why do I do this, and recognizing the automatic thoughts, I wouldn't want to work on the changing your responses until you've had some time to really reflect and watch. I think there's more value if you take this out and reflect on it with your interactions before you come back and kind of revisit these things. Thoughts, questions with somebody? Starting to say some? Okay, so I'd like to leave this for now. If you have questions, let you think about it some more. Think about what you heard your colleagues say, just in terms of, you know, what they checked. And right now, let me go back to sharing my screen. Okay, so this is the part where I kind of wanted to revisit, you know, the clock. And so the primary role of the board, of course, is in establishing the vision. I know this is always so much heavy stuff to give you in, in the afternoon. Okay, I'm gonna quickly move. We, we've talked about this before. So, you know, as you're establishing vision, you're figuring out what it is that you want to happen and why. And then, of course, as we talked about, then it's the superintendent to figure out how to achieve that, what, and why they think that's, you know, that's their recommendation to do it. So when we look at the key work of a Board of Education, you know, the first part of this is establishing vision, okay? At the center of all of this is student achievement. So it's establishing the vision that will help students achieve, you know, building in systems of accountability, the policy development, leaders in your community, you know, in, in those relationships. So if I pull this up, whoops, this is the vision right now from KSDE, adopted by the State Board of Education, for what the successful high school graduate in Kansas would have the, can you see this as this big enough, have the academic preparation, the cognitive preparation, the technical skills, employment skills, you know, and civic engagement to be successful. So that's like ultimately where, where everything feeds into. So in an ideal world here, when we're looking at, you know, USD 500's vision, as a school district in the state of Kansas, you're gonna want your vision to align with what the state's vision is. So you're kind of taking then the next step. And so what does that look like for our students in, in our context? So I'm gonna talk just briefly, and these are gonna be things you've heard before, but the categories that we're talking about. So the first category is our students. So are they having experiences, whoops, that challenge them and prepare them for the next level of their education? Do they have opportunities that align with their personal interests? And are they relevant? So as you're thinking about how, how you want them to graduate, are those experiences relevant to the skills and knowledge that you want them to have when they leave? And are the learning environments in which they're in, and the relationships with the adults that they have aligned with helping them graduate with academic, social, emotional, technical skills that you would want them to have? So then the next category is in that educational program. So the, and there's never been a year that this has been more apparent in terms of the home environment, prior knowledge. Once again, this word interest and motivation, once again, a challenge in remote learning situations, providing real-time support, and using prevention as opposed to intervention to meet students' needs, and opportunities to develop some of those other social, emotional skills. Then within our staff, our personnel, are they using instructional methods that will get kids to where you want them to be when they graduate? And is the support there for your staff to, and is there, to deliver quality instruction across all curricular content areas? So that, you know, that includes your electives, as well as your core content areas. And are there high expectations within the district? And then the, the fourth category is the physical plant or the facilities. Do they support, you know, where you want to end up? And then we talk about how all of this then is supported in, with a culture of communication and supportive culture. So as board members, you know, how, how do you assess that system? So let me throw that out as a general question. As you think about those categories, students, personnel, the educational program, and your facilities, what information do you receive? How, how do you assess the effectiveness of those four categories now?
I think at times it can be a little bit difficult when you really try to look at everything individually. But it's always good to be able to make the contact with those who are heading each one of those forward, so that you can learn a little bit, and then to try to move forward to the best of your ability.
Okay. So when you talk about that, are you talking about like members of the executive cabinet that oversee each of those categories in the information they give you? Or did I read too much into that?
Yes, that, that's it.
That's, okay. So, and I don't have the names at the tip of my tongue, but, so when you're talking about personnel, you know who that is, the educational program, who that is, facilities, okay? And, and then for student needs, so the academic and social, emotional, and measuring, measuring in those categories.
And I think it's okay for us to learn about each of those. And I think it's okay for us to learn about each of those, but sometimes you may find that you may be weak in one area, stronger in another. And that's why it's important to be able to plug into those who can help you maintain that strength.
And that's why diversity in a Board of Education can be critical because you all bring different strengths that hopefully all complement each other.
Yes.
How, how else do you know how you're doing as a district in those areas then? So like reports from the executive cabinet and information that they share with you and then, or, and prior knowledge that you bring, how else do you know?
Wouldn't we also know from state assessments?
Okay.
The state, you know, what's our graduation rate, what's our testing scores, our ACT scores, local assessment, all the different levels? That they're gonna, a lot of that's used in terms of funding and other things like that, how we're doing. And that's generally what they base it on, and which is what we're dealing with now. What's gonna happen in the legislature with the funding? And will they take in consideration COVID? And how do they appropriate funds for that? And then we didn't get to do some things we would have wanted to do, but we've all had to change.
And so there, there's some assessment data that you won't have from last year. Um, since we didn't, you know, have state assessments and, and, okay. So some, so quantifiable data um about students helps you, okay? How else do you know?
You know, by being out into, in the schools, being out in the classrooms, uh visiting the buildings and listening to people that are on the ground floor in the buildings, listening to people in the community. Um, the, besides listening to the experts that run the district for you, you also have to have your ears on the ground, listening to other people too.
Okay, so community members as well?
Community members, you need to be listening to your staff, you need to be listening to your students.
Um, So let me press a little bit on that area then. What, what are ways, in addition to you physically being present? Because as seven board members, you know, you can't talk to every student, every staff. Union member. What are ways for students, staff and community members to have a voice or to share their opinions? What are mechanisms or systems in place?
Town hall meetings, email contact, uh, some of our board members are on Facebook. Uh, our superintendent, our principals also have email. They share information with us. There are so many different ways to communicate back and forth with the community nowadays that we didn't have years ago. Um, we, we have to be available, there's phone calls. They can call the district office, leave a phone number and we can call them back. With the, you know, the number with the board clerk saying they would like to, to speak with one of the board members or the superintendent for that matter. Um, we have to be open to be approached by people to share the good things and then the things they have questions about.
So um, Dr. McGill and I, as an interim, I always hate throwing things out at you unexpectedly. Um, do, is there an annual climate survey that um that you're doing in the district?
Yes, we do.
Does it go to families and, or who all is involved in that?
There are, there are um a couple of different surveys that go out. One is one initiated by NEA that goes to staff. And that's about climate and culture in schools. And there is one that goes out to families.
Okay, and does the one that goes to families, does that come from your office or?
Um, I was just gonna say, I'm not sure uh when it's sent out off the top of my head. I believe it's initiated by student services, but I will um confirm that.
So a question I would ask you, is there a population in your district now that you're not sure is having their voice heard? So sometimes it's easier to identify who we're hearing from. Um, is there anyone that you're concerned you might not be hearing from?
And that's, that's a really good question. This year, the past year, they, our um ESL department and superintendents has directed our communications to reach out more in some of the languages that are more prominent besides Spanish or addition into Spanish to reach out to our parents. We've got over 70 languages and sometimes that can be very difficult. But we need to keep encouraging our, our speakers of other languages to contact us. And some of the languages that do not have a written language and some of them are very difficult to find translators for. But that's something that we are continually working on. And we can always improve upon that. So those are some of the people that maybe we're not hearing from as much as we want to. And, and we just, we just keep trying different avenues.
So a- as you think about assessing the system, so we've primarily talked about now, you know, staff and students, um, the educational program in part through those um like assessment data. Um, how do you, as a Board of Education, how are you able to assess your physical plant um and your facilities? You have a cabinet member that reports to you. Um, are there other ways that you know if your physical plant is aligned with um the needs that students have um to achieve where you want them to when they graduate? How do you know if the plant supports the program and the students and the staff?
Marsha, I would like to answer the previous question. I was waiting till Janie finished, but there's a large population, I don't know the number, uh, that don't have internet connection. And so, you know, if you, if we're relying, not, since we rely a lot on, you know, check out the website, do this, do that. If they don't have internet, they can't receive the information or communicate back.
Are there, are there um systems in place at this point to, to uh support that? Or is that a work in progress?
So um, let me see.
I was gonna say, Dr. McGill can answer that.
Yeah, uh, we, we do um Bright Arrow, which sends either a text message or a phone call directly to the um phone numbers that we have in the system.
Okay. So um, what we don't know then are families that wouldn't have internet or smartphones? Any sense of how?
And, and principals at the building level would um have more information about which are the families that need maybe a home visit or um an actual um letter. And so for example, when we were doing the enrollment for meals, we realized that we weren't having as much of our response as we thought we would get. So um, the nutritional service did uh mailing out of postcards. So that if people, because one of the requirements is you have to select if you're going to pick up meals. You have to select it so that they can be prepped and then either delivered or picked up. Um, so they did postcard mailing and then the families would have the option of mailing it back. And that was a way to address that, uh, knowing that some families don't have that access.
So then tying that with 70 languages and making sure.
It was done in English.
Hey, Marsha, this is Yolanda. So when I think about people that we're not hearing from, I think about those people that feel like it's hopeless or I've already told you how I feel. Not only have I told you, I've told you several times. I have not seen any action happen. And so where they're venting and where we're, where you're able to see how they feel is through some type of social media platform, which is not the most constructive way to do it. But you probably learn more there at this point. Whether I should or not, I spend a lot of time out there reading. You will see the public making quotes, you will see the public um making fun. You will see, I mean, you could, you, you can gain a lot of insight if you spend time out there reading. I know some people rather not do that, but uh, that's really where I see probably more that's not being fed up to us the way it should be. Um, it's because people just feel like, I already, I've already told you this. I've already talked to your teachers, I've already talked to your staff. I don't get feedback, I've already made recommendations and I don't hear or see those things coming back to me.
Yeah, so, so that's an interesting category because probably your most at-risk students, you know, are the ones that have given up hope. I mean, I wrote this down in my notes as those without hope because they think it doesn't matter what they do. Um, which, which is probably, you know, if you would correlate with the ability to communicate, probably ranks right up there with a language that's um different than your own. Because the words may come, but if you've already given up on assigning meaning to those words, um, it doesn't mean anything. So, so the way that you try to talk to people without hope may lead to some different kind of goal setting than finding interpreters or someone who speaks uh, a language, a low incidence language, for example.
But there are, a- another issue is the technology piece. Because maybe now, and when I say it, people laugh, but there are still people who don't have internet. They don't have a smartphone. They're doing good to have a regular house phone. Cause to have the technology, you gotta have some money to pay for. I don't see Spectrum giving anything away. They can quote Bible scriptures all day, but they're not giving the service free. And I don't see anybody giving it free. Cause when I taught, we used to mail certified letters, we went to the house cause you had to diversify. You can't just use one medium thinking that's gonna do it.
So I'm wondering if this will be on the legislative initiatives is the um, whether calling it closing the gap, but the making internet more available um across the state and some of those initiatives. Dr. Nguyen, you may know more about.
Well, I'm looking at them and Greg probably has already pulled them up. Um, number three, giving, give all students the opportunity to succeed. The second bullet point is ensure all students and families have access to broadband service and internet technology.
Okay. So that's the service and the technology, then we have to make sure they have the device um to attach to them.
Our students do have the devices.
Okay, so you're a one-to-one today.
One-to-one.
Okay. Okay, so what about facilities or physical plant? How do you know um? How do you know as a board if the, if your buildings are meeting the needs of your program to your students, your staff?
At times when uh we have community comments that come before the board to let us know what certain issues are that they have to deal with as parents or students. And then other times, I would just say, wha- uh, when they report to us at the board meeting to let us know.
Okay, and that's from the executive cabinet, okay?
Um, I would, you know, I, I think one thing I, I pull back on is um our board priorities, right? And so I look at our strategic priorities that, that the board has put together and thinking about how each of these buckets that you've, you know, pulled out, um, how those priorities play or, or aligned or affect these four areas, right? And so for me, it's, it's always, and, and then as a board, have we, you know, we have those board priorities, those six priorities. But how, how do we, what lenses are we using to evaluate, to look at, to make sure that these areas fall under those priorities? And I know that at every board meeting, you know, when there's something sent to, and put in front of the board, the, the, the cabinet and superintendent, you know, are supposed to say what board priority this is addressing, which is helpful. Um, but I think it's, for me, it's always, okay, let's, let's bring these things back to the board priority and, and figure out how they play, play into them. But I think it falls on us as a board to make sure that, that we've identified and talked through and understand and are in alignment with those priorities and how they affect the personnel, the physical plant, the students and, and then how we measure and evaluate and look at to make sure that we're addressing these things. So um, I think, you know, with your question around the physical plant, like how do we uh ensure or get information on that? You know, I, I think that falls under, you know, stewards of, of resources and account of, financial accountability, right? So making sure that, you know, our cabinet, our superintendent are giving us updates on, on, you know, when things are, you know, need to be addressed or, or not, right? Or when things are going well too, like we wanna know those things too. But for me, it's always, how do I pull that back to the, the priorities? And making sure that we as a board are, are always keeping those in mind too. I don't know if that makes sense in this context.
Well, no, that's totally why we, why I ask the questions this way. So we, we take those areas and so, you know, sometimes we wanna look at our priorities and we say, well, you know, it's, it's students. So yes, students are at the center of it. So if you think about that key work, students in the center, student achievement. But there can't be student achievement without um staff needs being met. You know, without appropriate educational programming, without a facility that supports the programming, that supports um, you know, the staff and other student needs. So they all do become interconnected. So we kind of, we try to break it down so I, to identify next steps and goals. But sometimes we forget to put it back together again and realize that one, you can't just drop, you know, one of these sections. Um, it's like um developing educational programming in your science classes and then not having uh the lab equipment to do with education programming uh requires or not having qualified teachers to teach the programming. You know, it, it all kind of comes together. So then as a Board of Education, you say, how, how do we know what's going on? And so um what we try to do is help, help you look at all of the ways that you can be informed and assessed while staying in the right part of your governance call. Okay? So that's where, where we're trying to um drive it to. So um, you know, when we talk about it all being supported, you know, with the communication and culture, these are some of the comments that you just made. So we can talk about two-way communication, but how have we made sure that people can actually access it? Um, it's, it's like if everything goes out on the website, but somebody doesn't have internet connection, have we really communicated, okay? Um, and then, you know, building capacity about the focus of the district. So one of the things that you do to do that is by having on your agenda, assigning it to a board priority, that, that is one step in making sure that that happens. You know, um, and then talking about um the progress. So um, and then this is the word that I tried to keep using is, is making sure that it all aligns. So I'm, I'm trying to watch time so to make sure we have time for that legislative thing. So this is something that I have asked um you before to think about. Um, but I, I want you to think about it now in this context of, of those four areas supported by communication and culture. Um, in relationship to student achievement at the center, what are three things that? what are three things that you do well as a board to support student achievement at the center?
So one thing that I would say is, we all have an interest and a passion. So we, we, at the heart of things, want to do what's right for our district and for our community. That's one of the things that I would say.
Okay, so, so a passion for ensuring that students do achieve. Okay, did I, did I capture that correctly? Okay, something else that.
I think we, we make space, thoughtfully and intentionally make space on our board agendas to lift up some of those things that we're doing really, really well. And allowing the time to lift those up. And Dr. Miguel does a great job of, you know, and, and, and bringing up, you know, whether it's a student of the month or something that it's a teacher's doing in a classroom or, you know, so allowing for that space to identify some of those individual things and then putting them out in other social media aspects so that folks are aware of what's going on. But I, I really enjoy that part of it. And that's even though, you know, I, I think that's something subtle and simple, but it, it can be effective and, and, and good.
It can, it can help you as a board, keep your eye on the ball and not get caught up in the mundane parts of the work. Okay, what's something else that you do well as a board?
I think we do a really good job of keeping the students in mind. I, like Yolanda, do read comments on social media. And I get, you know, so much communication. But you know, this past board meeting, we had to make a difficult decision. A really difficult decision about sports and how it would impact the community. And I, it seemed like everywhere I went, everyone wanted to talk to me or just share their concerns. So what I think we do really well is listen to our community. We do a great job of listening to those who reach out and take time to write to us. And that is shown in our board meetings. Because they are not, they feel comfortable writing to us, sending letters, sending things to our board clerk to ensure that we are getting the messages from them. So I think we do that really well.
So what, what are a couple of things, once again, with this idea of student achievement at the center, that you think that you could do better as a board?
Thing we could promote. We have a program that, when you mention this to other people in other states, they can't believe that we offer. That's Diploma Plus. We don't market that to us first. That a student can get a high school diploma and an associate's degree. Now, everybody's talking about paying for college. You can get two years paid for free. I don't think we push that enough. People are always talking about, well, they need something. I wish we had that. I mean, when you look at people who are trying to still pay, they've been out of school. Look at the Obamas, they were still paying for their education. And we're offering you two years free. You, all you have to do is put forth the effort. We need to market that. That's something, I believe in other places, people be tearing the walls down, trying to get to. Two years free, you don't have to pay. You do, you have to do some work, but we need to push that more. We need to be able to say that we got 200 kids who got their associate's degree as well as their high school diploma. And we're spending a lot of money for the program, but we gotta get more people involved in it. You can't do two, three, four, five, six, eight. We need to be in the hundreds by now.
So you currently have capacity for more people.
Yeah, they just gotta take advantage of it.
So what I think we could do from a board perspective is, I think it, I think it trickles down. So we, we spend a lot of ti, in my opinion, we spend a lot of time and we don't directionally know where we're going. And so clarifying our direction and then maintaining where we should be maintaining. So if we're maintaining at 10,000-foot level, which is where we should be at as a board, then at, staying at that 10,000-foot level, making sure that we're putting people in place that we can trust. And then setting the expectation. I think sometimes we don't get what we need as a board because we haven't set the expectation of what it is that we need and what's going to make us comfortable. So I, I, I think about it as chaotic, and this is my opinion only. We, to me, are chaotic as a board. But in my opinion only, and I own my part of, part of this, is we also haven't done a good job of setting expectations. So what do you get? You get chaos.
So Yolanda, you have just summarized the whole point of this exercise. Is, is really then looking, you know, as you're looking at student achievement at the center, you know, what are we doing well? What could we do better so that we are aligning with our priorities? And I, the language you use, clarifying so we can maintain and then setting expectations for, for what to do next. So, you know, as you're looking at next steps for goal setting, you know, some, some things have emerged in your notes here. One is, you know, promoting Diploma Plus. You know, that's come up. You know, the others are enhancing our communication with maybe underrepresented populations, underrepresented in two ways. Ability to communicate and those that may be without hope. And giving up, how do we inspire and reengage those? So just in this short time, those are some things that have kind of bubbled up that as a board, if you came back and could and might determine are those priorities, then, then we will set goals, action steps, then for us to pursue those areas.
But we never took the time to plan.
Yeah.
Time to plan. I mean, when we got, I know when we were elected, we were in and we were off. Anybody else coming in, you're in. It's just a, we never took the time to plan.
So these are some very specific steps where you can create next steps, action steps, steps, assign accountability, you know, who, who's going to be responsible for doing what? And as you think about how we started this discussion, how will you know? So how will you assess that, that those goals are being reached? So, so one of your next steps is what information do we need to ask Dr. Miguel to, to clarify what our next step should be? What, what do we know, what don't we know? What different information do we need?
And I think part of that, if I could just piggyback off, you know, what Yolanda said as well is, and into what you're saying, Marsha is, you know, again, defining what, what does student achievement mean, right? What, it's exactly what Yolanda was saying, setting those definitions and those metrics of how we want to evaluate, what information are we looking for in order to know that we are achieving, you know, what we want? Does it mean, you know, X number of students graduating from Diploma Plus? Does it mean?
Right, right.
These test scores, does it? So setting those, defining what that means to Yolanda's point. And then that will allow our, our staff to really look at and work at those, those areas and bring that information back rather than, you know, trying to figure out what we want. But I think we as a board need to set those, those measures.
So then if you think about those quadrants of important, not important, urgent, not urgent, by taking those next steps, it helps you figure out what is our urgent important and what is our not urgent importance? Because especially during a pandemic, it's really easy to get caught up with everything being urgent and being uncertain about its importance. Because everything seems important when it's urgent. You know, until you really sit down and, and, and think about it. So kind of going back and starting with that KSDE document of, you know, what the state board has said, it's not like you're just pulling it out of broad cloth. I mean, you have a place to start with categories plus the work that you've already done in establishing priorities and some very clear starting points in those areas, yes.
And Marsha, I would say, you know, we have to make sure that the board priorities that we chose and we chose them, we defined them, we looked at them strategically. We have to hold true to what we've established and not continue to waver back and forth or forget about what foundation that we laid, what we created, how we define them. So I think it's important for us to remember that.
That key word of the line. So, so everything that we're talking about, you need to be able to go back and align it to those priorities that you've established, which I think that the practice of doing that with, within your agenda is, is a good step in making sure that it's, it's one step to help make sure that you stay aligned.
And also I will say, some areas that we can improve on as relates to student achievement is, we have made great strides in the past three years for student achievement. So that, you know, we want to make sure that that's acknowledged. We have made many great strides. And so what we can continue to improve on is the trust and belief in our leadership. Dr. Miguel, the leadership staff, to trust and believe that they too understand our board priorities, that they are work, that we're working together as a team, not against each other, but truly together in unity based upon what we've defined and set the vision. I think we could also do a stronger job of setting the vision instead of having it set and then make it a moving target. But to set it and say, this is it, 2021, 2022, this is our vision, this is our goal, and not change it or make it seem like it's, it's no longer aligning to what we pre-set because it makes it hard.
So even talking about like the superintendent's evaluation. So goals that are set for the superintendent, you should be able to draw a solid line back to priorities that you've established as a board. Because it's very difficult for a superintendent to do what you need them to do if it's not, if they, if those expectations, going back to this setting of expectations that we're talking about, if those have not been established. You know, it's like shooting baskets when you can't see the, the rim. You know, just hoping you're getting close. So spelling that out very specifically. I do need to make sure we stop now to look at the legislative priorities, which in the theme of things, hopefully align with your board priorities for, for student achievements. So did Greg get them sent to you? Randy, you have those?
Yes, he sent those along, okay.
So just quickly then, any, I, I know I'm kind of stopping abruptly, but I don't want to lose this time. Any last minute thoughts, questions?
Marsha, I think we also, an area to improve, we also need to, in my opinion, understand there are things we don't know that we don't know. And that especially, you said the state board did X. Well, if they change their priorities and then we have to realign, then that means we have to go back to the planning board. And yeah, that's going to cause frustration on our part, our staff's part. But if we, when we set those priorities and we didn't know, we didn't know what we needed to know, sounds redundant and cyclical, and it is. That's where it gets, perhaps tension comes like, well, you didn't ask this six months ago. You're right. Didn't know we needed to have this information six months ago in order to align things or make a decision toward whatever the goal is. So we can, we can plan all we want. We must. But there's some times that you're going to have to make that adjustment when you hit that new road construction.
Like if you have, go and have a pandemic, you know, you, you, nobody could have, well, I mean, maybe some people could have predicted it. As board members, we probably couldn't have predicted some of what would have had to be our priorities this year. And so there, there's a certain amount of nimbleness that you have to maintain. But if student achievement is at the center, it should allow you to be able to make adjustments because the main primary target stays the same. How we assess or quantify what that achievement looks like may vary some, and that can be extraordinarily frustrating. But just even, you know, Dr. Nguyen, I would say, even in a process where you're going back and revisiting your priorities, asking that question, you know, what do we think we might not know now? And it's not that it's going to emerge because somebody's going to be struck by lightning, but it's just that reminder that there are going to be things. And sometimes we kind of have to think outside of the box to allow ourselves to maintain that flexibility of nimbleness.
Are those, as they call them, unintended consequences?
It, it will be a living document.
Yes.
Which will have to be adjusted as we go along, as we run into bumps like the pandemic and things that we cannot foresee. Because when the pandemic is over, it's not, there's still going to be things we're going to have to address for the next couple of years with our students. Because even if they're back in the building next year, our students and staff are going to need more social, emotional support for all the things they've gone through in the last year to 18 months.
And, and on the flip side, the unknowns are not always negatives. Right. And something happens in, in our society that actually propels and puts wind behind the work we're doing. Some people might argue with me, but I, I might say that some of the social justice issues that although they've created some challenges have also propelled some work in terms of opening eyes and, and getting people to listen and see things that they might not have before. So also maintaining, not letting an opportunity go by without grabbing it and taking advantage of it, you know, when it's there. So that's, that's why I really try to, it's very important to set expectations and do goal setting. But I think these points are very, very important. If you're so locked into them that, that you don't let yourself be influenced by these things, you're not, you're not going to be able to do what's, what's best for, for kids in the end. So I think those are excellent points that you've raised. And now I talk too much, I'm sorry.
Randy, would you be able to share your screen so that we can go through them?
Yeah, give me one second.
Did I get my stop share? What are you trying to share?
All right.
The state and federal, the state and federal, things Greg just shared with us via email.
Can you see that?
Yes. Yes.
This is the state policy, proposed K A S B policy positions for the state. Sorry, I'm probably going way too quick.
Yeah.
And there's, there's four pages of of just the state one, so just that flag.
I'm sorry.
And that's the end of the state policy proposals for KSB. Any questions or anything?
Thoughts?
Heard from our letter, the guy who represents us in the legislature. What's his feel on everything? Looks good. It sounds good. Will the legislature fund that?
I don't think we know, right?
Well, no, we don't know. I'm just saying, does he have a, a feel or a pulse as he talked to people? That's what we're paying him to do. He's supposed to help legislate for us and give us an idea. What's the feel? What's the pulse?
So when, when he met with us before the legislative forum, he helped us with, and I shared with you what we share, which is very much aligned with what KSB has. And he kind of guided us to provide the legislators some language, knowing that they may face a group of legislators that are not as sympathetic to our concerns as our own are. So he helped us craft some language around vouchers and reviewed our document. And, and I think the only feedback that we got was that, that for our legislate, legislators, it was some of these issues were an uphill battle because there is a more conservative body in Topeka than what, what we have in our area. But, or we met before the session opened, so we haven't talked since.
Well, no, we had the one meeting, but we didn't have all these documents. And now that we have it, and that's what they're pushing. I didn't know if he heard something different.
I can check with him.
If it changed, or are they pretty much consistently going to be the same?
Yeah, I can check with him.
Did you all have a chance to look at the federal or do you want me to pull those up as well? Look at those.
Just as an FYI, one of our first on K-12 budget that we will have to confront is expansion of school choice. And the vouchers has already been introduced in committee.
We knew that was coming. Huh? We knew that was coming.
Yeah. And probably Friday, we will, because Thursday we'll have a debate on constitutional amendment. Now, the main focus is dissatisfaction by a large contingent in both House and Senate against a Supreme Court ruling stating women have a right to, to terminate their pregnancy. Uh, but they are going to, we are going to talk about the right to education tomorrow. And, and it, that's cover for something dealing with Article Six of the state constitution deals with education. So we'll have a few more. I can probably give you more information, Dr. Miguel, on Friday.
I would love it here. Yeah. Thank you.
Randy, to answer your question, I looked over the federal and I didn't have any concerns.
I did too.
And I, I just popped them up on the screen, but um, yeah, I didn't have any concerns. But I'll pull them up really quickly so folks can view them. And that's the end of the federal, no, sorry. Yeah. That would end the federal policies. Um, and Mr. Goheen did email all of, both of these documents to everyone. So you should have them in your email if you want to go back. I know I went through them kind of quickly, so I apologize. But if you need to go back and review some of them and, and if I, because you missed them because I was scrolling too quickly, I apologize. But you have them in your inbox. Um, but if there are no questions or thoughts behind them. That's all we had for our agenda today. Dr. Weisman, was there anything else that you wanted to share? Um, what's next steps for us with you? Um, did we need to cover that? Do we have, I don't remember if we set other future dates or not.
I don't, I think we talked about, did we set one for February? If we did set one, I don't think I have it down. I remember the conversation, but I feel like we didn't.
Don't we have one for February the third, maybe? No.
Well, we didn't.
No, not the third. Somebody else.
I vaguely remember saying, let's not wait and do January. I don't remember the rationale. Vaguely remember not setting it past January.
We didn't.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah. It's another one. Did we want to try and do it on a Tuesday again?
Can I ask before we set time, I want to make sure, um, like our direction. So and maybe it's just me that needs the clarification, but like where's our, what's our end goal?
So the, the next steps, if, if I were continuing from here would be to, uh, work on the, you know, action plans related to clarifying the vision, you know, what would the next step be? And then, um, continuing, uh, the work related to the productive conflict. Um, the other thing that we talked about, generally was doing more work related to, uh, superintendent evaluation process. So I couldn't know where you were with that, but that all ties in again to in terms of the setting expectations and aligning.
Part of that, like a goal setting as well. I remember us talking about goal setting with visioning and, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you as well.
I'm fine with doing another Tuesday. You know, or if we need to do.
It's fine with me as well, but in the afternoon.
Does Tuesday feel better than Friday or does it all feel the same?
I think we have a couple of meetings coming up with the search, with the consulting firm on a couple of Fridays.
Yeah. Um, Tuesday is given enough notice is three o'clock generally okay. Dr. Jaeger, um, Dr. Nguyen, Yolanda, Ms. Clark.
I have K-12 budget at three thirty to five. So, you know, if we don't have a bomb threat, then I'm here. Let's hope we don't.
It works for me when you said given enough notice. That was the key point. So.
Marsha, do you have some dates in mind that you think would work for you, looking at your calendar?
Um, so let's see. I'm okay the afternoon of the sixteenth. I'm doing the workshop in the morning. And it always scares me when I see this, but I'm not showing anything on the night.
We have a school board meeting the ninth.
Okay. Okay.
So we've got like the second and the sixteenth.
Okay. So the second, I didn't look at the second. Um, my afternoon on the second is still open.
Does that give Yolanda and Stacy and Dr. Nguyen enough time if it's February the second?
Yeah, I just checked my calendar. I'm good with that as well. I see Stacy's saying yes.
I may not be available, but that's, that's okay.
You might be, you might be able to pop in.
I will if I, I can, yes.
Okay. How about you, Randy?
Is there a time that's better for Dr. Nguyen, since we know ahead of time that she wouldn't know? I see head nods. Okay.
You know, if the committees, if my committees meet, I've got higher ed budget from one thirty to three, three, and then K-12 budget from three thirty-five. And that's, fingers crossed, we don't run over, but that's okay. Yeah.
And those are.
Thank you for asking.
Tuesdays, every Tuesday?
No, uh, daily.
Oh, every.
Yeah, we just don't meet on, usually don't meet on Friday. And, you know, the committee chair has control of the calendar.
So you would meet on, on the, on, uh, on Wednesday also then?
Oh, yeah. For sure. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Do, do you want to look at Fridays?
Not for my purpose. I mean, the, the, the group has, I think, expressed the sentiment that Fridays are at the end of the week, they'd rather not. So thanks for considering.
Okay, I'm open. So as long as we plan ahead, my days, I can, I, and look at my calendar. It doesn't matter what day of the week for me, it's going to all be the same. I'm going to look at my calendar and say, yeah, I'm available or no, I'm not.
Right. Fridays will, will work. Okay.
Friday, the fifth?
Friday, the fifth.
I thought we were trying to have something on the fifth with the consulting.
And that's February.
Yeah, that's in March.
I mean, March, yeah. We don't have anything so far on February fifth.
Yeah. So that will be fun. At three thirty or three o'clock?
Three, if we can.
Three. Yeah, three if we can.
Okay.
Does that work for folks?
Yeah, I can do, we said February the fifth at three o'clock.
Would you have Leslie or Jamia put it on our calendars, please?
Will do. Marsha, does that work for you?
Yes.
Marsha, you play a key role in this. I guess we should check with you first. Just kind of forgot to do that.
It does. I'm good. All right.
Perfect.
Wish you all a great, uh, rest of the week and we all will pray for a peaceful tomorrow.
Yes. Thank you so much, Marsha. Thanks, everybody, for your participation today. Jamia, thank you. Um, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.